It's the order. It's the order they are on my screen, so we'll welcome the three of you. This will be recorded and it will be put on our YouTube. And I think probably our. Web page or whatever. So hopefully there will be some other people that will. Tune in and watch it a little later, but we certainly thank you for coming. And for being willing to speak with us tonight. So we will turn it over to you, whoever wants to start. I assume you usually figured out among the three of you is who goes first?
I think we anointed JP, I believe.
Okay, so. First off, thank you again so very much for hosting us and inviting us to be here today. I'm just leaving another meeting. I walked out of the meeting and I was getting in the car and I didn't want to be. On the on the road trying to have the discussion. So I'm just part kind of parked out here in the parking lot. With my mom as my co-pilot. So. I again, thank you guys for having us. We always enjoy every year having the opportunity to speak with legal women voters and we appreciate your engagement in the community. And giving us the opportunity to talk with you and answer questions. So. I'll start with just a couple of the things, you know, that I've sort of. So this year I'm serving as the board president. We rotate every year in that capacity. And so that doesn't mean a whole lot other than that's who run the meetings and who gets to have about six or eight more meetings a year that they have to attend. For positions that require the board president to serve on them. So. So this year is my lucky year for that. I've been spending a lot of time working on the broadband internet problems in Asheville County. Spending a lot of time with the. East Gate Regional Council of Governments. Trying to partner with them. We did a tri-county broadband feasibility study where we worked together with. Trumbull and Mahoning Counties, trying to kind of come up with a regional plan. We had a grant for that, got a great report back. And you know, now we're trying to implement some of the action steps that were in place for that. We've gone out for a couple of different grants, trying to improve our broadband services in Asheville County. But the. We have not been successful, not only as a as a community making those applications. But also some of the providers in the county that have made those applications were not awarded either. So. Some of the responses we got back, we did get some some good feedback back, but the the main thing was that although. You know, we know things are bad here in Asheville County for internet. There's places that are much worse off. So. That's not real reassuring, but we're going to continue that work. One of the big projects that we're hoping will move forward is. A fiber backbone to be placed along State Route 11. Which would be a middle mile network of internet fiber optic cable that would connect essentially from the lake area all the way down to the Ohio River. And. If that is put in place, hopefully that'll lay the groundwork for other providers to then tie into. Without having the significant expense of laying that lengthy infrastructure. Down to the southern part of the county and then being able to to branch that out into some of the communities there. Internet access, as many of you may know, is kind of a three-pronged problematic approach. You have access, one, just just having a provider that can be available to you. Many places in the county only have. A one provider, maybe it's their phone company. And it may not be satisfactory or adequate to do things like telemedicine or. You know, work from home or to to access. You know, for your for your business, for educational purposes, if you have kids at school. So. Access is one problem and we're trying to solve that. And it's probably going to be through a combination of. Hardline fiber optic wiring. But in many places of the county, that's that's probably not going to. Be cost effective and possible to happen. On, you know, dirt roads that there may be a mile of farmland and two houses. One of them's an Amish family. It's not going to take it anyways. Making that investment is probably not going to work in some of these areas. So a fixed wireless solution, which is kind of like more of a microwave signal or a cellular type signal. That can. Use a line of sight component to get from a tower to maybe a receiving dish or something on your home or your barn. That's going to be much more cost effective and probably able to reach a broader area for less money. And so we actually just received back a response to an RFP from a provider. And we'll be having meetings here in the next couple of weeks to hopefully move a project forward. This is going to get at least three towers. In the the southern part of the county in place, so that we can start sort of using that as a as a pilot project. And seeing how that works and and hopefully serve maybe between six and eight thousand households and trying to get. Service to people that that otherwise have really struggled to get it. For a very affordable price. So we talked about accessibility being one option, affordability is another. Some entities have broadband that's. You know, it might be hundred dollars a month or seventy five dollars a month. And for some people, that's just not affordable. So even though they they have a provider, they may not be able to use it because of the cost. And so. This this one company we've been talking with. That was a responder to the to the request for proposal. They've got a plan that starts at the about thirty dollars a month. And now through the Affordable Connectivity Program, the ACP program, you can get thirty dollar rebate off of your monthly internet bill. If you qualify at two hundred percent of the federal poverty limit. So that's approximately fifty four thousand dollars a year for a home household of four. So it's fairly liberal. As far as being able to. Income levels to be able to qualify for that. And. That's something that should help make internet much more affordable. So even if you already have an existing plan through your provider. You can sign up for that through your provider or through the FCC website. And and get that discount. And right now we only have about, I think, thirty percent of the eligible population in the county. Applying for that. So there's a lot of work that can be done out there. We're trying to get the word out for more people to utilize that, to put that money back in their pocket there every month. And then the third component, I guess, is sort of training. We're also trying to work with the libraries. Find more resources available to help people that may be able to afford it and they may be able to have access to it, but they're just not really sure what to do. And how to make the internet work through their cellphone or their tablet or a computer. And so training is an important component of that, and we want to make sure more people have access to to the training that they need to utilize that technology that's out there. There are programs out there such as PCs for People and also this Affordable Connectivity Program that we referenced earlier with the thirty dollar discount. That can provide computers, refurbished computers for. A very, very nominal fee. So we want to again, let more people know that those those sort of opportunities are out there. So. More to come, lots of work to be done. Hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be able to get these towers up and see how that's working and get some access to people who really don't have it in the county. But. Over the next, I'm sure several years, there's going to be a lot of money flowing and programs out there and grant opportunities, many of which are competitive. But we're certainly going to try to to put as together as good of plans as possible, so that we can help improve that for the county. I really see that's one of the main things holding us back from an economic development standpoint. Because we've got very affordable land, we've got affordable cost of living, we've got wonderful natural resources here, we have the ability to be a bedroom community. And as people are getting away from the metropolitan areas and the big cities and the east and west coast. Having the ability to work virtually for a fraction of the cost of living in some of these areas, they can come out here and have a great quality of life. But they're not going to be able to do that if they can't access the internet. So. That's something that I'm very passionate about and that this other commissioners obviously are very supportive as well. So. You know, I'm going to let the other commissioners kind of kind of share some of the things they're they want to talk about and then maybe I'll chime back in with some other stuff here a little bit later, but. That's really one of the things that's consumed an awful lot of my time and and, you know, I've enjoyed on that, working on that sort of thing. So. I can take a question on that topic if you wish, or we can turn it over to Casey or Catherine.
Yeah, I have a question. How are you getting the word out about this rebate? I certainly have heard nothing about it.
So we've been working with. Two-on-one, Community Action has done a lot of work with that. I've posted on social media. We've had some flyers out. We've talked with Metropolitan Housing Authority, some information with the NAACP. The. Country neighbor has had flyers. So I would be happy to get some things to you and let you share them through your channels.
How about sending it out like with school kids? Now that school's starting because.
How it's going to be?
Sure. Please, if if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. I think that would be a good way to get the word out too. Blanket the school kids or their social media as to that that's available.
That's a great suggestion and I'll reach out to Mike Candela there with the representing the superintendents from all the schools and. Through the SC player with the program. I don't. Know what they've done within the schools as far as that's concerned, if they have had any seed yet. So get a copy of that and thank you for the suggestion.
All right, Catherine, is it okay if I go? You want to go?
Don't make Catherine go last, Casey. She always she always has to go last.
Catherine Catherine's up.
I I don't know if I have enough signal for anybody to hear me. How is it? Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Not be going at all. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Mm hmm. It's a little little broken up, but it's we can hear you.
You can. Well, let me see. I'm gonna bear with me. I'm gonna move. And see, so I'm on cell service. As everyone knows, I do not have internet at my house. JP is working diligently to get that into South County. Is this better? No, okay.
I hear you, but yeah.
Yeah, that does seem better.
It does. Okay. Well, now I'm in the hallway of my at the front of my house. So I'll make it quick. So I have been working on the drug epidemic. As I'm sure many of you have read, the opiate settlements have happened in Ohio. We were awarded approximately eight hundred and eight million dollars. To be distributed back into the communities. So we are excited about that. We have formed Region thirteen, which is Asheville, Portage. Lake and Geoga Counties. I have been appointed as the representative from Region thirteen to serve as a board member at the state. And then. From there, I have been named the Chair of the One Ohio Foundation Board, which represents the entire state. This. Board is the mechanism where four hundred and forty million dollars are going to be brought back into communities. Through their regions for drug abatement. We are in the very early stages. It is just being stood up. So. We are working diligently. One Ohio is consuming almost every day of my time right now as we stand up the foundation. To get everything in place for those monies to start flowing. So. That's really the biggest update I have right now. I'll take any questions on the opioid settlement and then I'm probably going to have to go because you guys. I'm probably cutting in and out, but like everybody's screens are freezing for me. So probably not a great connection.
Yeah, I have a question. Do you have any suggestion or any thoughts about what you're going to do with the money?
So the four hundred and forty million that are going into the foundations. Projects can be submitted to the regions. They will then be forwarded to the state just to make sure that they are compliant with. The actual allowed uses and then those monies will be sent back to the communities to implement the program. We are still working. Drug abatement is a very large brush, so it can be anywhere from prevention to treatment. Any anything that has to do with the opioid epidemic.
Are are you working with, you know, some of our agencies? I'm certainly hoping you are the. Agencies, the community counseling, things like that.
So we are not even to that point yet. This this is just unfolding. Region thirteen was formed in, I believe, April. And the foundation at the state level, our first meeting was in. May or June. So we've only had three meetings. At the state level and the regions can't do anything until the foundation is up and standing. And has all the criteria in place for the regions. Once that's done, then the commute, the regions, the actual regions are going to be working with. The local communities to pull those projects out. Any other questions?
So you foresee that. County, city. Agencies will have to apply. Directly for these funds?
Yes, it is a competitive grant process. Each region is allocated a percentage. That has to go back to their region of the four hundred and forty million dollars.
All right, does that mean I'm up? Okay.
I think it does. All right. I I hate to sign off. If you, if anyone has questions, feel free to email me or have Casey send me a text, but I literally am standing in the corner of the front of my house with my laptop. So I'm going to sign off. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate being here tonight. And like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you.
Casey, I'm going to let you take it away.
All right, um, thank you. I want to thank legal women voters for the opportunity to talk this evening. Always appreciate the opportunity. It's probably the seventh, eighth time that I've had the privilege of doing this. So appreciate that. Um, so there's actually quite a few things that I want to touch on, but I'll kind of be brief on each item and then I'm sure you'll have questions. So. Would love to cover several topics here tonight. So the first first thing I do want to make everybody aware and I hope you can help spread the word. But the Asheville County Solid Waste District is hosting our Household Hazardous Waste Event. On that'll be September third. So that's in a couple of weeks. As you recall, we actually host a tire collection event in the spring. And then we host the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event in the fall. We know unfortunately it is Labor Day weekend. That was the only time that was still available from the vendor this year. But a reminder that the event allows you to get rid of your oil-based paints, your your batteries, your bulbs, your automotive fluids, any number of. Items pesticides, mercury, if you have thermometers, things of that sort, if you have any of those items that you can't rid of through condition, through conventional means. Opportunity to come to this event, dispose of it. It's open to all county residents and it's free. Now there is no charge. But it is nine to one, September third at ATEC in Jefferson. Uh, so a couple of other things.
Electronics with that too, isn't there this year, Casey?
We're working still to get that together, but the desire is to yes, also be able to do that. Yep, yep. Oh, and you need to bring proof of residency, by the way, which most probably have a driver's license. So a couple of other things the county commissioners have been busy with over the last, gosh, probably close to a year now. The Asheville County Commissioners, along with every local government Nashville County, received an ARPA allocation. The American Rescue Plan Act, Asheville County's allocation was just short of nineteen million dollars, actually. Received half of that allocation last year, the other half this year. The county is far from having spent all of that money. But I will say there's been several requests that have already been received and we started to make allocations. The county right off the bat did take advantage of the ten million dollar allocation that we could actually use for general government services. So what that means is that right off the top of that nineteen million dollars, ten million dollars, we were actually able to build for general government. To then theoretically set aside for the county to use in the future. Above and beyond that, the county did receive multiple inquiry inquiries from organizations throughout the county. And we have made allocations, many of which are in the process or will soon be in the process. We're announcing all of this and letters are going out as well. Because of the very strict nature and how these funds can be used, the county actually worked to bring a project manager on board. To assist with ARPA allocations, but to also assist with a number of other projects the county is involved in. We recognize that these are federal funds and we have to follow federal guidelines. So bringing on a person was actually more cost effective. Than necessarily farming one hundred percent of it out. The county still did. I'm entering into a contract with a firm, Julian and Grupe. They will be providing us with some guidance as well on the allocation of these funds. But the contract will be. Really minor in nature since we were able to bring a person on board and we'll be working with these multiple entities. So that's something that's consumed a lot of our time over the last several months is working with these ARPA funds. And I anticipate over the next several months, we'll be working through that as well. I believe I touched on this at the last meeting, but just a friendly reminder that the county did complete the. Update of the Asheville County Comprehensive Plan. I do believe we actually had some representation from the League of Women Voters and we appreciate that. If you did not have a chance to review the final plan when it was released. And adopted by the commissioners, it is on our county website at ashville county.us. And you can actually go to the Community Services and Planning tab and then click the Comprehensive Plan. So the Comprehensive Plan was updated in twenty twenty one, was last updated prior to that in two thousand and three. So we actually will be working through that document and working to implement aspects of the Comprehensive Plan. But the primary driver for having that done is to support grant applications, one of which I'll be touching on here shortly. So the commissioners have also been involved in a number of economic development projects in the county. I'm sure you've seen some exciting things that are underway here in the county, probably saw the Riverbend Hotel. That work is has commenced in Bridge Street. The county played a small role in that project in that they actually received a five oh three corp loan. I know Commissioner Duke Rowe serves. On that board, but excited to, of course, be a county partner in that project will certainly that will certainly help. The the Ashribula Bridge Street area. And you've probably been following a lot of the economic development work that's underway in the Harpersfield Geneva area. Spire has been growing by leaps and bounds. Just had an update from him a couple of weeks ago, the owner Jonathan Arenfeld. And he shared that the academy student enrollment continues to grow. And he's working on another, a number of economic development projects. The new Marriott Hotel is the ground has been broken for that. We actually created a a. Tax incentive district in that area to to help foster that growth. And then we have the Starbucks Hotel. That or the Starbucks Coffee Shop, rather, that is in the works. And you may not know this, but it's a bit of news. The Spire. Ownership team acquired the old Motel Six across the street. That will be rebranded as a Spire Hotel. They also acquired the old Chops gas station or the Chops Steakhouse, my apologies, and also the. The old Pizza Hut in the process of acquiring that, all of which there are some plans to develop both of those sites. He also, there was also an acquisition by the Spire team for property along the lakefront, actually. Just east of the Geneva Lodge, there's talk of. A hotel development project over there on the shore of Lake Erie. So really excited about that prospect of that project. We also created a TIF. Well, about to about to finalize the TIF rather in Austinburg. I'm sure you've been following some of the development over there. There's a lot of exciting things happen in the Austinburg area. The new hotel opened several months ago. But Montrose will actually be locating some dealerships there in Austinburg. And there's going to be some infrastructure needs out there. So we certainly want to make sure we have some funds available to help support some of those. Investments in the community. When I touched on Harpersfield, I neglected to mention that the Water Tower Project is underway. We are in the process of obtaining grants for that project. Sadly, because of inflation, that project cost has almost doubled. Originally, the the Water Tower that is necessary to support the growth that's happening in that area. The Water Tower Project has doubled. Originally, it was going to be one and a half million. It's close to three million dollars now. So we're working to secure grant dollars to support that project. The county commissioners also entered into an agreement with Nexite. Nexite is a development firm that helps support retail growth in communities throughout the country. They were instrumental in helping with some projects in the Geneva Harpersfield area with the hotel and with the Starbucks project. But we also are working to bring on other communities such as Austinburg, such as Kingsville, such as Rock Creek. To actually support those communities in helping to bring additional retail or restaurant opportunities. So they could work with any number of vendors such as, you know, a Chick-fil-A or a. A any number of other places that they'd be working with to perhaps market the area to support development. Where we recognize there's a lot of potential for growth is along the interstate because of the amount of traffic. So those communities, the city of Cahnia, and neglected to mention them, they've signed on, they're working with Nexite. To develop that area and bring additional retailers in. We recognize that if. Were able to bring one or two in, usually others will follow. I'm usually activity spurs additional activity. So we're excited to have brought Nexite into these communities in the county and for the county to foot the bill to to help make that happen. Finally, the county will be working to put together an application. And it looks like Growth Partnership for Asheville County will be kind of the lead on this project. But the state of Ohio utilizing federal ARPA funds has made available five hundred million dollars. In ARC funding to Appalachian Counties. So if you're in Appalachian County in the state, you'll be eligible to apply for these funds. And these funds center around three priority areas, downtown revitalization, community health and workforce. So the the idea is to bring all the communities together and to try to put together a joint application. One of the primary. I guess points that they shared with us when we were at the governor's mansion, talking about this grant opportunity was they want to see collaboration amongst multiple communities. So by bringing all the communities together, perhaps it would be an opportunity to put together a county application. That will fund several projects and allow us to get a hopefully a good piece of that five hundred million dollars and bring that back to Asheville County. And then finally, the commissioners have been hosting a number of forums over the last several months. You may have seen it. It's the Coffee with the Commissioners Forum. They've been successful. We've had a good turnout. Most recently, we're in Andover and probably had twenty five, thirty people there. We'll be hosting our next one on September seventh. Will actually be at Wall Street Coffee in Jefferson. So feel free to spread the word. And really, it's an opportunity for you to hear about what the commissioners are working on, but also take questions and comments. So with that, that is a number of things I wanted to touch on, but I'm sure you have questions. So would love to love to hear those.
Two perennial questions, the lodge and the jail. What's going on with those?
Sure. You want me to take that JP or do you want to take any?
Yeah, I'll say. Jail and then you can take the lodge, Casey. So. The the jail issue, you know, really has. Sort of stagnated since it was defeated on the ballot. We. The Community Corrections Board, which really tasked us initially with the, you know, moving forward with this project. They have had a couple of meetings since, but really have not come back to the Board of Commissioners with a, you know, with this distinctive plan. You know, we're sort of patchworking the current facility. One thing that did recently happen, which is going to be helpful, is the. One thing that did recently happen, which is going to be helpful, is the Common Police Court secured a grant to allow for virtual arraignments on each floor of the existing jail. That's going to be one thing that's going to help a little bit, which was one of the technologies that we had hoped to expect it to place at a new facility. The physical structure still, no, no red, but at some point in time, I anticipate we'll have to come back to the community asking for some assistance. And I think we're, one, continuing to keep an eye open for grants. Two, looking to see how much we can reduce the cost that we were going to ask for based on some of these ARPA funds that we were able to stow away. And three, trying to determine what were the main reasons that it was opposed last time? So that we can potentially make modifications to the plan moving forward to hopefully allow it to be successful.
And thank you for the question on the lodge. I figured that question would come up, so I saved it for the question time. But so the Geneva Lodge legislation, as you recall, there was an amendment placed in the last budget bill that would transition the lodge to state ownership with a state allocation. Since that has occurred, we have been working to seek a modification. Because through further analysis, it, it, we want to make, I guess, really the just after further analysis was we want to make it clear that we want to keep Delaware North as the current operator of that facility. They've run that facility so successfully. And their current contract runs through two thousand twenty-six with two five-year renewal options running to two thousand thirty-six. So the idea behind seeking a modification to the legislation would be to tweak it, to make that clear, that the operator would stay the same. And that operations really would stay as they are today. But that it would allow us to take advantage of this state allocation of roughly thirteen million dollars that would allow the county to pay off the debt. And really, the driver behind this whole thing is for the state to participate a little bit in this endeavor rather than necessarily the locals bearing one hundred percent of that cost. If there was an opportunity for us to take advantage of the state allocation, that would then free up all of that money that we currently pay towards debt service to be able to use for other endeavors. So what better way would we be able to, I guess, really benefit from this? By, for example, if the net profits, the profits that we actually receive from the lodge before we actually use that for debt service, since we wouldn't have any debt, what better way for us to have those funds to just reinvest right into that facility? And not have to worry about paying it for debt service. It would provide a good amount of cash to support continued upgrades, improvements, whatever you want to call it, to that facility. And above and beyond that, it would free up our CFA funds, funds that are collected through the county's bed tax, to then be able to use for other tourism-related projects. So really, that is the idea behind seeking this tweak to allow us to take advantage of that, of that allocation. It's a blessing for us to be able to get that State Lodge paid off here in Geneva. And then also be able to free up those funds, support other projects here in the county while continuing to keep operations as they are. So that's what we're seeking.
So is there any, is there any word that ODNR even wants the lodge? We had always been told they wanted nothing to do with it.
So we've had conversations with them. I think certainly it maybe came as a surprise for them that this would be on their, on their plate. But I've come to learn, and sometimes, you know, change can be a little difficult, can be a little hard, and for the state to maybe take this on. I'm cognizant that they already have a system in place and a way of doing business. But what we're really just seeking is an opportunity for us to take advantage of that state allocation that was made through legislation. But for them not to have any headache, if they don't want the headache of having to run the facility, that's fine. Let's continue as it operates today with Delaware North. They won't, they won't have that burden if they view that as a burden. So that's really the goal with working with them on this.
So the other is that they would, they would pay, pay off the loan, but then we would get whatever revenue comes in and we would put that right back into the lodge, is that correct?
That is certainly the goal, would be absolutely should do that. But we need to see kind of a tweak to make that, make that abundantly clear, that that's the goal.
And I think there's a couple other, there's another important component to this is that, you know, this doesn't really work unless we can allow the existing contracts to remain in place. Because if the contracts have to be canceled prior to their completion, then we have some financial liabilities back to Delaware North for termination of the contracts prior to their full completion. And that erodes away from the funds that we would have been getting from the state to pay off the debt. So not only do we want to see the successful management continue, but we also need to have that happen for the financial incentive. So it's not eroding away at the resources that we were anticipating to receive to pay off the debt. So I think that's another real important part of this and why we need that legislative tweak to make it happen. And so whether the money is vested directly back into the Geneva Lodge, I would be very happy to see an arrangement where it's invested back into Geneva State Park, Geneva Lodge, Pima Tuning Valley, Pima Tuning State Park. You know, just as long as it would remain in Ashtruba County, if there are additional resources to improve the facilities that we have. I think there's always things at all those locations that could be done to improve the tourists and the local experience that we have here and can offer.
Yeah, and and another, another point, because another question we get is, well, what are you going to do with the CFA money? One of the misnomer, you know, I guess, misnomers or points that was shared was you're going to just use this to pay for the new jail. Well, there's actually restrictions with the CFA funds and how those funds could be spent, and they center really around the tourism component. So one, one point that's been brought up, and we've asked people, you know, where would you like to see additional investments? One thing that comes up time and time again is lakefront, lakeshore development. That seems to come up quite a bit. And what better way for us to have a revenue stream to maybe support investments along the lakeshore? We all know that our lake is underutilized in this part of, in the, in the eastern basin of Lake Erie. They take advantage of the water much better in the western basin, the Sandusky Toledo area. So this is an opportunity for us to be able to have funds to support projects like that. But also support, let's, you know, I want to see, of course, some development happen in the Andover-Pima Tuning State Park area. We know that that's ripe for development and they just haven't had the funds or really, I think, the ability to kind of get something off the ground. And, you know, what better way than to develop that stretch of Route eighty-five between the square and Pima Tuning Lake? And make that the, you know, happening place that we all know it can be. So that's just an idea of a couple of projects we'd like to maybe tackle, perhaps with having some freed-up funds to support economic development, tourism development in the county.
Any deadline that you can see as far as getting this all straightened out at the lodge?
So with the MOU we entered into with the state, it would run through mid-December to work through an arrangement. And the reason for the late, the lateness in the year is the legislature likely will not be coming back until after the election.
I have a question. I have a question. You keep talking about these legislative tweaks. Okay, how is, who is going to initiate that legislation? And what are the chances of these tweaks happening?
So I'm, I'm very hopeful. I'm, I'm always an optimist on these things. So we are certainly going to be working with our local legislators. That is the overarching goal is for our local legislators to be working to carry this and to pursue those, those modifications.
Except it was the local legislators that wanted the state to take it over to begin with. I mean, if you remember the initial process and how this all played out, more than one person was blindsided by this last minute inclusion into the budget. And I can tell you, there was a very much a prevailing feeling of people being left by the wayside and people being ambushed by this whole process. They were not surprised considering who the person was that promoted this. So nonetheless, I think there needs to be more transparency. I do realize that you do have a lodge committee. In your opinion, who do you really think are the major players in trying to come to a resolution to get these legislative tweaks to happen? I mean, I know the convention facility authorities involved. Who else is on board trying to move this forward?
So thank you for your points, and I will say we've had multiple discussions with multiple parties ever, ever since the legislation was brought forward. We had conversations with the CVB, the CFA, Geneva on the Lake, among many others, as it relates to some of those concerns. And I will say the efforts to seek tweaks have been derived to a large degree from those conversations. So I would say that we're definitely listening, we hear them, and we want to work to make sure that we address those concerns in this tweak. And really, the overarching goal behind the legislative fix, if that's what you want to call it, would be to just continue operations as they are today, but take advantage of the state allocation. It's not uncommon for legislation to be introduced and then for them to seek legislative tweaks after. It's not ideal. But we've heard from folks, we hear their concerns, and we want to make sure that we address those in a legislative tweak. So I'm hopeful that by working with our local legislators, our state reps, state senator, and even others in the region, that we can make this happen.
Okay, what would happen, what would happen if December nineteenth comes and there has been no resolution?
So the commissioners, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but the others, but there's been several times we've made it clear that if we don't like the deal, there is no deal.
And that was really going to be my, my point is that, you know, it's in the legislators, you know, best interest if they really want to see the trans, the transition happen, to work with us on a legislative tweak that makes sense, that we can accept. Because otherwise, we can not sign off on any agreement and we can go back to the way things are. And all this process is completely for naught. So, you know, I would, I would think that, you know, when it comes right down to it, they might not be happy that things aren't exactly the way that they put it forth to begin with. And we might have to make some changes that, you know, aren't exactly what somebody else would want. But ultimately, it has to be something that we feel is palatable and makes financial and operational sense for us as county commissioners. And I think, I feel very confident, and I know we've felt very strongly about many of these points being critically important to us being able to move forward and agree to this, to agree to any final transition to happen.
And I want to make it abundantly clear, I mean, I want to take advantage of that opportunity to pay off the debt because this would give us light at the end of the tunnel and allow us to finally have funds to not only build on the successes at the lodge, but tackle the next big project, the next couple of big projects. So, and I wasn't elected and I'm not in this position to make sure that tourism fails or doesn't do well in our county. I wouldn't be pursuing something that was going to move us backwards like this. So our goal, my goal is to make sure that we continue this, can make this facility as successful as possible. But let's now take on the next thing, the next thing, let's keep moving forward.
In my understanding, I have, I have not heard of a single appropriation from the state of Ohio to Ashtruba County that has come anywhere close to what this amount of money is, would, would equate to. So I think, you know, that's certainly not something that we want to frivolously turn away because we might not be happy with the way that it was done initially or that it came about or that, you know, that there might be, might not be a perfect agreement. I think there's some things that are critically important that we have. I think it needs to make financial sense. I think we want to keep the local control in place as the existing contract states. And until somebody tells us that we can't, if they tell us they can't do that, we need to find out why they can and what we can do instead. That's our challenge to them so that we can approve this arrangement.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question.
Are there any other questions? I know I've asked a lot, but are there any others, anybody else?
Yes, I guess I have another question. I understand the Ashtruba County Port Authority just purchased like eighty and a half acres from a company called Velocis. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, and I understand that they want to use that purchase as a, you know, as an economic driver for the area, which makes sense given its location. Is there any, like brownfield mitigate, you know, mitigation that needs to take place? Or is there anything about that parcel of land that maybe could prevent this from going forward? Even though there have been successful brownfield projects, there are other ones that have just died on the vine over the years too. So I was just curious as to what the overall game plan was for this property.
Well, I think that, I, I serve as the commissioner's liaison to the Port Authority. And so this has been an ongoing discussion at the Port Authority. The Port Authority is uniquely positioned as a member and partner of the Brownfield Coalition with the Land Bank and with the Planning Department at the, at Ash, at Ashtruba County to secure brownfield funds, apply for grants, and to do cleanup on properties and projects like this. They do not have an end user, you know, in, in mind right now. But gaining control over the property and being able to concentrate and focus on cleanup opportunities is a huge part of finding an opportunity later for redevelopment. There's lots of assets within that property and around that property that really make it a great investment. You've got the access to the raw water plant at Plant C for processing water. You've got the rail infrastructure that is highly underutilized. You've got the very close proximity to Route eleven, the railroad shipping sections. You've got development happening at both the Ashtruba Harbor as well as the Coniat Ports. You know, you've got this microchip project that's coming in down, down in Columbus. So there, there's a lot of opportunities for industrial site redevelopment and, and gaining control, I think, was the first part of, and, and focusing on the cleanup was the first step in that process. Because if you're going to totally rely on somebody else's timeframe, whether they're going to seek the money to reinvest in it, whether they're going to hold out for more money to a buyer that maybe one of us wants to come along and sell or wants to come along and acquire it, whether they're going to be a good neighbor, whether they're gonna go bankrupt or whether they're gonna form an LLC and now you can't reach anybody. All of those things are hindrances to development. So gaining control by the Port Authority, which is specifically focused on redevelopment, environmental cleanup, economic development, creating jobs and industry and, and growth for the community. That's really what their mission is. So I, I was very supportive of this, and I think they're uniquely positioned to be the best people, best entity out there. Because they can do some things that just as a government entity, we really couldn't do. So that's really what Port Authorities were designed to do.
Can I ask where this property is? I somehow missed this.
It's in the Ashtruba Industrial Park, industrial area, their state road, middle road, lake road. Alcam Metals area, Ineos, all those areas down there.
JP, will it be east or west of Petman?
It would be to the east of Petman.
Near Lakeshore Park.
It would be east of Lakeshore Park, further east.
Further east of Lakeshore Park, okay.
I, I want to just touch on one other item that we, we didn't touch on. And, you know, it's hard to believe because Casey touched on so many things. But we didn't really talk about water and sewer development. But there's lots and lots of water and sewer development projects that are being discussed around Ashtruba County. When we talk about infrastructure, Pier Pont's been working on a project. Kingsville's been pushing for a project at the I ninety and one ninety-three interchange that we've had some meetings on. I had a meeting with North Kingsville talking about, you know, what's the process and steps in place to bring Kingsville? I had a meeting with North Kingsville talking about, um, you know, what's the process and steps in place to bring Kingsville sewers to the village of North Kingsville. Um, Buckeye Schools just received a grant appropriation to uh, uh, help them run a sewer line from the Blake Road School Site uh and tie into the um. Uh, Ashville Township uh termination point for the Environmental Services Sewer Line. Um, the uh, we, we've got a project on River Road, South River Road out where the wineries are to expand water. Coffee Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant is looking at an expansion to accommodate the growth out there in Austinburg. Uh, we just uh signed uh resolution today for an extension of a water line out in um, uh New London Road uh in Geneva Township. Uh, there's, there's really a, a large demand in the county for more water and sewer service. So uh, the ARPA funds that we've received. Uh, they are very, very flexible for water and sewer type projects. Um, and there's a, a lot of need for that. The airport's looking to see if they can get water out there. They had, they had someone express an interest in, you know, putting in a very large operation. But we don't have uh the water to support fire suppression out there at the county airport. So. Um, and I know this would complete a loop out there around A-Tech and connect over there into the Denmark Township area. So. There's, there's lots and lots of opportunities and lots of ways to spend a lot of money um on water and sewer projects. But they're all part of things that um, you know, give us the amenities that uh, you know, we've sort of come to expect in, in modern living. And as restrictions come about in the future uh from the EPA with more and more regulations on inspection of septic systems. Uh, on, on groundwater contamination, um sewers uh are, are really gonna become much more important in the future. And for those that uh, you know, maybe don't wanna tie in right now, I think they're gonna find when they have to replace the septic system because it fails. The cost involved with the replacement as well as the ongoing monitoring is gonna be very burdensome to people. And I think there'll be a lot of folks seeking um. More sewer and water development in the future. So. One more topic.
Anything going on with um downtown Ashtruba, the old Carlisle Building, any funds appropriated for all that?
So uh, the Carlisle Building just applied for um some money from the state to um. Do some of the environmental cleanup that's gonna be necessary on that site. Um, geez, I think it was a half a million dollars they applied for. Um, they have not received word back on that. Uh, it was um. A second round of a grant project and uh it, it's, it's gonna be made available. Um, when they see what money is left over from the first round of, of monies that didn't get used. So. There's not a, there's no certainty to whether they're going to receive all that or not, but their main goal um in that development project was use utilization of historic tax credits. Uh, that company's been very successful with doing that at the hotel, old Hotel Ashtruba in the Castle Block. Um, but there's an extensive amount of remediation that's gonna have to be done on that Carlisle's building. And I know that this grant would be um. Very, very helpful in moving that project forward. They're just finishing the completion of the Castle Block. Um, where the Ace Parts uh store is, I don't know, right there on, on Center Street. Um, and my understanding was they really weren't gonna start any work on Carlisle's building until that project was completed. Uh, now I think they're kind of waiting to see what happens with this grant to see uh, you know, what resources they're gonna have to put in personally to begin that process. Um, but uh, they've got a great track record of restoring old buildings and uh, and repurposing them. Um, I understand it's going to be residential on the top three floors and then I believe the second floor would be um office space and then the first floor would be commercial. Um, so I think that's the, the tentative plan for the redevelopment of that building. And obviously, if it moves forward, um, that'll be a huge catalyst to uh hopefully future development and growth on Main Avenue.
And the only other thing I would add is when we, when we have this collective conversation with multiple communities. Um, that five-hundred-million-dollar Appalachian Grant I mentioned would provide funds for downtown revitalization. So. I would anticipate that being a conversation that's had with all the parties about maybe putting together an application perhaps to support something in downtown Ashtruba. Cause I know one of the things that they uh have been sitting on, as I understand it, and JP could probably provide a lot more insight, was I'm kind of the placemaking um project. I know there were kind of several things that they wanted to kind of tackle there, but just didn't have the funds. Perhaps maybe this grant would be an opportunity to do that.
I've already had a discussion with the city manager and with Jane Haynes on council uh in regards to the uh ADDA um. Uh Streetscape Plan, which they had um done several years ago and just never really had the resources to fully implement. And dusting that off and seeing what components could be pulled out of that as a part of this um grant application. And uh, and then the discussion came up about doing this with all the communities in Ashtruba County. And so um. I'm, I'm hopeful that that will be a big part of it because I see, you know, re- replay, repairing and replacing maybe sidewalks. Uh, maybe dealing with some of the utilities, uh maybe doing some of the facade work, um, so maybe some landscaping. Uh, I've just been a big believer that the future of Ashtruba uh relies heavily upon. Accessibility, visibility, development along the Ashtruba River Corridor, Main Avenue, down Lake Avenue into the hospital, medical corridor there. And then tying into uh, to the Harbor District of Walnut Beach and Bridge Street. And um, yeah, I think that this is a great opportunity to try and uh. Um, you know, target some of those specific challenges in that area to really improve them. So hopefully we will uh, we'll be able to see. Multiple components of that addressed in the near future.
Before we finish, I just wanted to thank the league for the um Wall Street Coffee gift card. So I used part of that today. So I did wanna express my appreciation for that.
Well, we used to have you for dinner, have you as a, we hosted you for dinner. That sounds a little better. And uh, you know, right now, I, we still don't feel comfortable meeting in person. We have only had one or two meetings. In person so far this year and for the last two year, three years, so.
Well, I'll say that I, I, I enjoy Wall Street, but it's hard to beat the home-cooked meals that we always had at your meeting. So uh, we'll take that.
I would agree.
What we could do by getting a pie for you or something, so.
Not necessary, but thank.
Okay. All right. Well, if there are no other questions, we've used up an hour time here of everybody's time. We certainly appreciate the commissioners once again. I've been involved with the league for many years and it's just always been good to, to meet with commissioners, know what's going on. We really like to know what's going on. So uh, we appreciate you very much and uh hopefully we'll have a few more members that will watch this on our. On our website and everything, but uh we do appreciate it and thank you once again.
I'd just like to emphasize, this does not have to be a once-a-year conversation that any time you guys have questions. If you have a, a hot topic that you'd like information on or us to answer directly to you in this type of a forum. Or individually or over coffee at Wall Street, please don't ever hesitate to reach out and uh. You know, again, you can call us, email us, uh stop in and visit and, and I know all of us would be, be happy to reach, to, to talk with you anytime. On any topic that you have a concern that might be timely or top of mind, okay?
Thank you, thank you. All right, with that, we will let everybody go for the evening and go watch uh the Guardians win.
Yay.
Yeah, we'll see.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Yep, good day.